All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, special meeting for the Town of Kennybunk Select Board. This meeting is not broadcast, but it is being recorded thanks to our new video technologists here. So that will be uploaded and put online sometime in the not-too-distant future. So we've been called to order. We have a slew of public hearings, and so I will open the first one. The municipal officers of the Town of Kennybunk will hold a public hearing to hear a public comment on the following: An application from the Winehouse, LLC, DBA Winehouse, on Main Street, for a liquor license located at 17 Main Street. Any-- yes?
Did we forget the pleasure? We did some, just wondering.
Well, you know, it didn't have--
It's not our--
Do you want it?
No, no, I'm just wondering.
Right. I do what Kathy tells me.
You're in good hands.
Forty-three years. There he is. So we're-- hey, Bill. We're talking about an application from the Winehouse, DBA Winehouse, on Main Street, for a liquor license. So any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Is that Brenda?
Unfortunately, yeah.
Come on down.
Do I get a prize if I come down today?
If you attend two more meetings, you get a set of steak knives.
I did it.
She did.
I'm glad to see something in that building, because I love the building. It's a great building. It looks good. But I do have some questions. I understand that the building has been open for sales and wine tastings. Nobody's refuting.
We admit, nor did I, we don't have a point of view on that. And if you could just bring the mic a little closer--
Sure, sure. Well, I do have some concerns. And it's about process and not about what it is or what it's selling. I think it probably will go very well in town, and that's great. But it has been open to my knowledge. Sales have been made. I have known people to be there. And I don't know if the two wine tastings that they held were actually held, but they were scheduled for seven and eight June. This is an application to-- what they are applying for tonight is a permit to operate from the Town of Kennybunk. Before you can get a liquor license in the state of Maine, you have to have a permit from the Town, which is what they are applying for tonight. But you can't sell liquor in any form, in any way, in the state of Maine without a liquor license from the state. I've done a ton of research, and some I can apply to you. Once you get your liquor license, you may sell, but you may not do wine tastings without another license from the state. And you can't get the second license until you've had the first. And according to my reading, and I may be wrong about this, if you are going to serve food, which their advertisements and their websites indicate, they're not selling food, giving away food at a wine tasting, you must have a vitler's license, which is a third license. And there's a question about a health license. So I'm making these comments tonight because without any of these licenses, this particular facility, which we all like very much, can't be open and can't sell anything. At least without the first one. And I don't know whether people in town know that. I would assume that the person who owns the facility would be aware of this, because the person is in a family that has other restaurants, food industries, serves liquor. I would assume that that person would have that. So this is my concern. And I'm going to make a suggestion that the board can do or not do as they wish, because that's their prerogative. But since it does not have even an initial liquor license, it is not legal for the facility to be open until it has a liquor license in its hand. And therefore, I'd recommend that the Town of Kennybunk perhaps approve the permit tonight. That's not my objective. My objective is that it can't be open and selling anything until it's legal. And so the Select Board can issue the permit so that they can go forward to get their licenses. They cannot be open. And I would suggest the Town make sure that they not be open until they have the legal authorization to do so.
Thank you, Brenda.
You're welcome.
Anyone from community development familiar with this issue?
Good evening, Chris Osterreiter. I can speak to this briefly. This property changed hands and actually was granted a change-of-use license from our office back in November. So from a zoning compliance standpoint, it checks all of our boxes at our level. It moves out of our court, gets into your court from a licensing, so at least there are no barriers or hurdles on our end. So you're, I guess it's safe, from our view, free and clear to operate. That's probably where I can start with that piece. So in terms of parking, in terms of use, everything is code-compliant from our perspective. So there's nothing we would say that you couldn't do that. Brenda can talk about the licensing piece, but I think we're okay with it as is.
Thank you, Chris. Is that a phone ringie shirt that you're wearing there?
Kind of Robin Ziegler, I think. Thank you. So we've had no complaints, reference calls for service there. I think Brenda is correct. Oh, you would need to get the permit and then, in fact, move forward with the liquor sales.
Merton?
Yes. So Brenda's mostly correct, except-- Yeah, Brenda's mostly correct, except there's a retail license, which I believe they probably have. Retail allows them to sell wine. What they're going for here is a consuming-on-premises license. So that's what's here tonight. If they-- it wasn't mentioned to me, or I wasn't sure about the wine tasting part, but if there is cheese or crackers served, then they also need a vitler license.
Mike, who enforces this for the Town?
I know you got the answer right there.
Liquor enforcement would--
Correct. Liquor enforcement is a state--
Yes.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
It is a state license, but the Town gives initial approval.
Okay. Is there anybody here from the Winehouse? Okay, questions from the board?
Yeah, I just have a question. Obviously, wasn't aware of parts of the situation, but so if I'm hearing it right from Merton's perspective, then if they just stop doing the wine tastings and we have someone check-in with them that they're not doing that until the next piece of this goes through, they'd still have the approval right now to sell closed bottles of wine due to the retail? Am I hearing that right?
Yeah, I believe we'd be able to instruct what they would be allowed to do as they pursue their licensing, if they choose to.
Anyone else from the public? Board, what's your pleasure? Oh, I'm sorry, Brenda.
I don't very often disagree with Merton, but as I read the state regulations and I've-- Don't do it. They're horrible. But they have a retail license, but they also must have a license from the Division of Alcohol, Firearms, and something else in order to sell the wine. So that's what I read, and it is on the line. You might want to check.
So my understanding is you're not objecting to us taking action on this this evening, but you want somebody to--
Correct. That's correct.
Remonstrate with them.
Yeah, that's correct. No, I don't object to the project, but this isn't-- This isn't-- We don't want to be doing things that are illegal, especially with alcohol in Kennybunk. We don't want our reputation damaged in any way. So it's a matter of, you know, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, getting things in process, and it's very complicated. It took me a long time to figure out all of these pieces. So I just want somebody to go through it. But no, I think the board should take whatever action it deems correct.
Thank you, thank you. Lisa?
Thank you, Brenda, for your research. So not to keep going, but I see they have an event scheduled for tomorrow night. And so it looks like you have to buy tickets, and you can sip wine and paint pictures. Is that, like, I don't know, that seems like a whole nother kind of category of things.
Sorry. You don't want me to read all this? I know you don't. And I know there is something tomorrow night. Application for on-premise taste testing event permit. This came from Bureau of Alcohol, Beverages, and Lottery Operations. I'm sorry, I added the firearms. They must have this to do wine tasting. They cannot do this until after they have the other permits. And there are rules and regulations to wine tasting that are rather extensive, and they may only have one wine tasting month. These are the rules and regulations. I've got two pages of them. I just think it's important for all of us, especially people in the hospitality industry who are having another operation, to do things by book, especially when it's alcohol.
Thank you, Brenda. It seems to me that this doesn't fall within the parameters of our jurisdiction, but rather the state's. And I think our job is more ministerial than anything else, which is to approve a liquor license. In the past, the only times that we've ever balked at doing that was when there was some sort of history with the Town, through the Police Department, Fire Department, or someone else. But we don't have the enforcement arm to regulate this. That's my take.
So I agree with you, Blake, to an extent. I just feel like I agree that we shouldn't set the precedent, that this can just happen. So I agree with moving forward with this license, but possibly Chris, Karen, or Chief McKenzie, Mike, someone to either approach the business, send them a letter, give them a call, whoever is registered on that business, and just mention to them that we went ahead and approved their permit tonight. But we, you know, did have people from the public make note that they have already been operating, and, you know, that they're going to have to take that up with the state, so that we at least took that step. There's no reason for us to feel responsible for that.
I certainly can assure you that we'll be in touch with the applicant tomorrow to let them know the concerns that were expressed, and ask them to make sure that they have complied with all regulations.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the liquor license--
Hold on, one sec. Hold on.
I just wanted to add one other thing, is that we have two other places in town that have wine tastings and retail wine licenses, and they also have a vitler. So what would be missing here would be the vitler license for them.
So we can't approve that before they apply, though, right?
Correct.
Okay. So we could just do this first one, and then they'd have to come back in?
Yes.
Okay. So maybe then, when you talk to them, just say they're-- Have to do that?
Hi, Susan Blenfield, West Kennybunk. Seems to me they are selling liquor without a license. And they're members of the Police Department here. I'd kind of like to have them speak up about this. Seems that that would be illegal activity. No?
Chief McKenzie, are you in the business of enforcing liquor license?
That would be main liquor enforcement. Like we said, with the state of Maine, that would actually-- Main liquor enforcement would actually be the enforcement arm of that. We can confer if we have any concerns, which we can certainly reach out to them tomorrow. But we'll make, you know, we can try to make sure that they're in compliance with the law.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Sorry, Blake, I just feel what we should-- I should add to that, is that the retail license that they receive from the state, the Town is not at all involved with that. The state handles that all on their own. There's no approval needed from the Town for a retail license. It would be no different than Cumbes and other places that sell beer and wine.
Okay, so slightly out of our jurisdiction, but it sounds like the Town is willing to work with them and ensure, to the extent we can, that there's compliance, but enforcement, no. Merton?
Anyone else? I'd like to make a motion to approve the liquor license application for the Winehouse LLC, doing business as Winehouse on Main Street, located at 17 Main Street.
Moved and seconded. Frank, are you going to recuse yourself on this, or is there any connection between you and this?
This is, um, it's not my daughter's restaurant.
Okay, so--
She's got her wine. It's the one across--
So again--
It's her sister-in-law.
Got it, okay.
But I can recuse myself. I have no problem with that.
Want to do that?
Yeah.
All right. Just to keep it all clean. So moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, the motion is adopted in a vote of five in favor, none opposed, one absent, one recused. All right? So that hearing is closed. We move on to the second hearing. Municipal officers of the Town of Kennybunk will hold a public hearing to hear a public comment on the following: An application from Tom Laban, DBA Trail Dogs, for a vitler license located at 61 Main Street. So, Chris, this is the Sunoco Station?
Yes.
Can you give us an overview of that before we-- I understand there are a few of these tonight, right? Or Karen?
I think Karen should do it. She'll be fine with me. Good evening, Chris Osterreiter. Yes, this is before you tonight, solely as a vitler's license.
That's worked.
As Blake said. One of the things that's a little bit interesting about this is in the vitler's license or the licensing process, it does seek a sign-off basically from the code officer, because they do the enforcement end of it. Our role is really at the back, not the front. We sometimes get in front, so we don't have to do the back. In this instance, there's several different mobile vending units, food trucks, as I think you may know them. Depending on where you're at and how it happens, it gets reviewed and it gets regulated in different ways. This particular piece of property, because it does not have an existing site plan, but it is in active use, it's kind of a give-and-take scenario. We have met with Mark. Every mobile vending unit on the property needs its own individual vitrals. Like, I'm not going to try. I'm just calling vitrals rather than mess-up. So what we have done is we've met with Mark, we've looked at the property. Each one will come and ask for permission for you to operate there. He has identified locations on the property where it can exist and not interfere with his activities. So this won't get a formal site plan review like some will. If you were to go locate a food truck in the Hanford parking lot and displace their parking, that would have to amend their site plan. So what I'm trying to say nicely is there's different sets of rules depending on the circumstance. This is one where we're relying on the fact that you're existing operation, they're being proactive and working with the Town, and we have a very good understanding how to not have that conflict. So we-- I have met with Mark. We talked about how he's going to operate, been available with staff to go look at, make sure what they're proposing does work. And I think there are some basic standards within the ordinance in terms of refuse, not conflicting with circulation. All those things don't look like they'll be a problem. So I think you're in a pretty good position to say yes to each of these. I think anyone tonight who's going to appear before you is going to be in that same circumstance. So I think it'll be an up and down in terms of it.
And thank you for the overview. So we don't have to keep calling you up. Mark, that's a spiffy new sign, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, that looks very nice. So is anybody here from Tom Laban, TRB, Trail Dogs?
Yes, sir.
Tom?
Hi.
How are you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Just punch the button there.
Okay.
The other one, on the base.
And just take your name.
Hi, Tom Laban with Trail Dogs. Questions? No, just looking to set up with, be a part of the excitement that Mark has going over there. You know, it's, uh, I think it's a great location for it. I met with Mark this morning just to talk a little more specifically about locations on his property. And it sounds like it's, you know, as far as the in-and-out goes, he's adamant about keeping that open, and we don't really see any traffic issues. I know nothing to do with us, but that deal across from Bentley's is amazing. I came through there tonight, and wow. But, uh, yeah, hoping to sell some hot dogs on Main Street in Kennybunk.
Okay, I was going to say, I'm guessing it has something to do with hot dogs.
Yes.
Okay. And have you operated this business in many other locations, or is this a new enterprise?
No, we were at the Pirate House last year. We got our license, I think, Labor Day, and that was our first weekend down there, feeding the late-night crowd down there, which was a lot of fun. We've done some taprooms, microbrews up in Gray and Orano. We really didn't get actually vending until late last year. We've done some-- We did a couple of winter things, but kind of in startup, if you will.
Right. Well, thank you. No need to torture you there, buddy.
No, it's fine.
So any questions for Tom from the public from the board?
Well, I just wanted to say we're really excited.
Well, thank you.
This is great.
Yeah, yeah, we are, too. Looking forward to it.
Yeah, definitely excited. But my kids need to know, are you going to have a Seattle dog?
I don't know. Yes. And a frat dog. A frat dog.
Perfect. All right. But no, look into the Seattle dog.
Okay.
Okey-dokey.
So just one comment, not, I guess, I'm the fun sucker, but I'm very excited for Trail Dogs. I just wanted to bring some awareness to Tom's situation that I felt like the board should just kind of think about him all over. I remember approving Tom's request to be at Pilot House when you guys opened last fall.
Thank you, yeah.
And I feel like a kind of a missing step in our process is that he, in my opinion, has already-- already has a vitler license to be working in the Town as a, you know, food truck, trailer, whatever he is. To move locations, in my opinion, like, correct me if I'm wrong, you had to go through the fee process again and pay again to receive a new license to operate on Main Street now. Is that correct?
It's pretty-- It's expensive and--
So I'm not saying that I ever--
Yeah. Hundred seventy-five bucks, that's a lot of hot dogs.
Right. I'm not bringing it up to ever say that I want to discourage revenue for the Town, but something I feel like we should think about is that once someone is approved-- I agree with him having to come back down here to change his location, and so that we're just aware of where he's going to be. But I guess in my mind, once someone is approved and they've paid the fee for the year, whatever it might be, as long as they're operating at an approved location, it feels unfair to me that he's having to pay two locations, but they're still within our Town. It's just my opinion.
Why is that?
Well, I-- Hang on, let's find out. Chris?
I'm going to get to Karen here to know.
Vitler licenses are site-specific, so you have to get one for each location, and because each location has to be reviewed by Chris and Karen's department. So that's what the ordinance says. And his current-- His current vitler license ran out May 31st.
Okay. So maybe just in general, thinking down the road, though, if we can, think of approved areas, and once someone is in, he could technically go between Pilot House and Mark's if he wanted to within that year. That's just something I'm thinking about while we're on the topic, and I can't wait for Trail Dogs to be closing.
Cool. All right. Ready to--
Yes. All right. Make a motion to approve the vitler license application for Tom Laban, doing business as Trail Dogs, located at 61 Main Street.
I second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The motion's approved on a vote of six in favor, none opposed, one absent. So that hearing is closed. We'll open a third hearing. Municipal officers of the Town of Kennybunk will hold a public hearing to hear a public comment on the following: An application from Pamela Day, DBA Forking Good Grub for a vitler license located at 61 Main Street. Did I say that right?
Hi, Pamela Day. It's actually Pam and Fam Forkin' Good Grub, but--
Hold on here.
It's that one.
It's what?
It's Pam. It's Pam. It's Pam and Fam Forkin' Good Grub.
Uh-oh. All right. We'll make note of that in the minutes, because it was down here as just plain old Forkin' Good Grub.
I love it. Everybody likes to shorten it and make it easy. I actually launched in Las Vegas in 2018, and I have served from there to here. Driven my 28-foot truck from there to here in 2019, back there at the end of fall 2019, and then back here in March in 2020 before the you-know-what hit the fan. So I served a six-month contract at the shipyard during that time. It was great fun. I'm super excited to get Kennybunk going and, you know, get on the program. Food trucks have been, you know, spreading across the country, and it's great to have you guys jump on board. And I want to kick some Wells butt for my own personal reasons, and I am in Wells, too. I grew up in Wells. Our food is different than what most people eat, so I'm hoping you expand your palates and try some garbage fries and some bulgogi and all kinds of other things that you've probably never tried. We have a killer bacon jam grilled cheese, so come out and find us. We already have our schedule set. I've seen you and a few of you other ones, because I just keep showing up so we get here. So I'm glad we're here. And just one thing, your fees, what you brought up, I tend to agree with you, because it, you know, it's a tough business, especially right now. Prices of everything have skyrocketed, and then we add vehicle maintenance to it. Just for reference, for the Town, your fees are six times what Kittery's is and 15 times what Wells is.
So what's--
So it's a lot.
What fee?
Your fees are a lot. Your fee for the word that nobody likes to pronounce, I wish you would change it.
That's one fifty.
It's-- It's when they told me how much it was, I was like, whoa, that's a lot. I'm, you know, just to take into consideration, it is quite a bit to be paying every year.
How much is it? One fifty? One fifty?
Right.
Okay. So noted.
Any questions?
Thanks, Pam. Any questions yet, Lisa?
I just, I meant to ask earlier, but when are you all starting?
Um, since it's taken a little bit longer to get licensing going, I'm going back to Vegas for my daughter's wedding, so I'll be starting on the 7th. I already have my whole calendar done for the summer and ready to go, so we're ready to rock and roll.
And are all the other businesses starting around the same time? Or--
Yeah.
Yeah? Cool.
Anyone from the public want to be heard? All right, Courtney.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the vitler license application for Pamela Day, doing business as Pam and Fam Forkin' Good Grub, located at 61 Main Street.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The vote-- The motion is adopted in a vote of six in favor, none opposed, one absent. So that hearing's closed. We open another hearing for municipal officers of the Town of Kennybunk will hold a public hearing to hear a public comment on the following: An application from Nicholas Wright, DBA Char-Wings Snow and Dough. Char-Wing--
Rings.
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 W, sign.
Yeah. Char-Wings Snow and Dough Adventure for a vitler license-- I can see vitler. Located at 61 Main Street. Is that you, sir?
Yes.
Well, come on down and tell us what the rig is.
Hi.
Orso. On the base.
It's on.
Oh, it's on.
So welcome.
Thank you. My name's Nicholas Wright. We, for the last two years, have rebuilt a 1974 GMC Chevy ice cream truck from up in Portland. It themed it to adventure. I actually used to design theme parks, water parks, before I moved to Kennybunk in 2010. This is kind of a branch off of my other business, Sharper Events and Tents. We've always done full-service events with Snow Cone, stuff like that. We've always done full-service events with snow cones, stuff like that, but this will be strictly fried dough, snow cones and bottled water with toppings of strawberries, blueberries, maple syrup, powdered sugar, cinnamon, sugar and apples. So, it's a pretty cool truck. It's taken us two years actually to build and right now we're waiting for our health inspection. So, pending that, we're hoping to be open for July 4th, this, that weekend.
Is it Nick or Nicholas?
Either.
Okay, Nick. Questions for Nick? Sounds like you're selling sugar.
Yes. Courtney's seen the truck, it's pretty cool.
Hey, there you go, Bill. What, what are you open on, on, in the morning? Trying to figure out if I can get this in my way to boil it or work.
We're actually hoping for, like, on the Saturdays when you see all the, the people under the waterhouse, we're hoping to do it like at 9:00 AM for that. So, during the week, we're gonna kind of play it by ear, but I'm thinking probably like 1:00 to 9:00, somewhere in there.
You, are you open during, on Sundays or?
I think we're gonna do, try to do seven days a week and see how it goes. And that was really the, the core of the truck idea was to keep it back to the, bring it back to the old carnival foods, fun foods, so.
So, Nick, any questions from the public? For Nick? My disabilities, I live within a hundred yards of all these things, so, but then I lived next to the lingerie for a year, so.
Anything on the menu for dogs? Cause Bill, that would be...
Yeah. Snow cones.
All right. Little chicken broth on top.
Thank you, Nick.
Thanks.
Courtney? All right. I'd love to make a motion to approve the Vittler license application for Nicholas Wright doing business as Char-Wings Snow and Dough Adventure located at 61 Main Street.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? None opposed? The motion is adopted, a vote of six in favor, none opposed, one absent. And that brings an end to our public hearing, so if you guys wanna watch us make food here, I don't know if you're lucky to stay or you can...
Yeah, we're really excited for it.
You will, right there.
Happy Wednesday.
You got it. Absolutely. Good to see you. How do you get next?
To luck. Yeah, that's right.
They have cream cheese on them.
All right.
Delicous.
That's enough for all of you.
Yeah, and no taste testing, like, that was a missed opportunity.
Okay, item three, discuss the challenges associated with police officer and firefighter EMS recruitment and retention. Public safety, safety agencies across the country are experiencing extreme challenges with recruitment and retention of qualified personnel. Kennybunk is no exception. Police Chief McKenzie and Fire Chief Rowe will be present to share with the board the difficulties their departments are experiencing in that regard. Could you walk any slower?
Thanks. So, good evening.
Welcome.
So, I'm gonna take you all back in time to start here. Go back to 1988 is when I started here as a reserve police officer and then a year later in 1989 is when I applied to be a full-time officer here in Kennybunk. At that time, we had over 100 applications for that one position, okay? Now, let's fast forward 33 years. We have been advertising for a police officer since February 23rd and had not received one application until about a week and a half ago. So, that's about four months. Now, that person has been given a conditional offer, which doesn't mean they're hired, that means that they're gonna go through our background process now, which is extremely stringent, okay? Because we're having such an issue across the country, this is a countrywide issue, definitely a statewide issue and a local issue, doesn't mean that we can lower our standards. So, it's a very rigorous background that somebody has to go through to be a police officer. So, it's the background investigation done by an investigator, there's a polygraph, psychological, physical, you name it. So, that does tend to wash quite a few candidates out. Hopefully, this one will come through okay. Back in the day, many moons ago, when I was new, the majority of officers at our department lived in town, okay? Today, there's one officer that lives in town, okay? And that makes a difference, you know, it truly does because, I mean, our officers, they love being here, but it's not home for them, right? And that, that can make a difference. Now, why are we having these issues? Obviously, the things that have transpired across the country has negatively impacted people wanting to get into the business. I also believe it's generational and we started seeing this quite a few years ago now is when the newer generation really didn't wanna work shift work. They don't wanna work evenings or nights. They don't wanna work weekends and holidays. That, that has certainly added to it. Now, what does Kennybunk Police Department offer? We do have a really good culture and environment for the officers, kind of like a family and that, that goes a long way. We have abundant support from our residents as well as a great working relationship with our town staff and elected officials. Our police department has a great reputation in the law enforcement community. Our department is able to offer many specialties, assignments such as school resource officer, K night officer, main drug enforcement, criminal investigations and other specialties such as D I R E school, which that's somebody that's highly trained and recognizing people operating under the influence of, of drugs, firearms instructors, accident reconstruction, evidence reconstruction, elder liaison, et cetera. So, again, there's a lot to offer by working here. We have a decent pay, which equates to about or just above the 50th percentile in comparison to other towns around us. Very good health insurance. Something new that we're going to is a four and three schedule, four days on, three days off. That is staff-dependent, that's if I have enough staff to be able to make that happen. Now, what are we really up against right now with recruitment and retention? It's two things here. Recruitment, that's hiring new officers, and then retention, keeping what we have, okay? We currently have three vacancies in total and that's due to retirements and resignation and we're down another officer due to a medical. So, that's, we're actually down four officers. And when we're down that much, what happens is officers get, you know, forced in, they get forced to, to hold over, they get forced a lot. It's, it's almost every day officers are being forced and that's, that can attribute to burnout. As I said, we've been advertising for four months and we've only received that one application. We're competing with almost every police department out there. There is a shortage of qualified applicants and if you're an applicant, you can pretty much take your pick where you wanna work right now in law enforcement. We're competing with police departments that are offering sign-on bonuses anywhere from $2,500 up to $20,000 as well as recruitment bonuses, meaning that if an officer within the department can recruit another officer from somewhere else, that officer can get a, can get a bonus. In fact, Kennyport's offering a very sizable bonus upwards of $20,000 right now. We're competing with police departments that have better retirement plans and we're hoping to get the retirement question back on the ballot, hopefully in November. And I wanna explain a little bit about the retirement system. Currently, our department is one of two in York County to have the current plan that we have. It's a 25 years of service and you would get 50% of your salary. As I stated, in York County, and if I did my math right, there's 30 municipalities in York County. There are 27 others that have a better retirement. Majority of them would be a 20 years of service and they would get 50% of their retirement. And then the balance would be 25 years of service, but would get 2/3 of their salary. So, that certainly does make a difference. And then Cumberland County is pretty much in the same boat. The majority in Cumberland County have either the 20-year retirement or the 25-year retirement with the 2/3. We're competing with P Ds that are offering very competitive pay rates. And with regard to retention, we need to do all we can to retain our officers because the cost of recruiting, hiring and outfitting and training officers is in excess of $50,000 when you factor in their time, our time as well of training them, outfitting them with their bulletproof vest, their uniform and all, everything else that goes with that. So, it's very expensive when we bring somebody in and it's, so that's why it makes it even more important. We wanna keep them happy. Again, we offer a lot here, but in my, in my opinion, what we really need to do to recruit and retain is we need to invest in our employees by way of being very competitive through our retirement plan, wages and health insurance. Again, health insurance is really good, but that's only one of, one of the three. So, that's, again, in my opinion, what we need to do. I will certainly answer any questions that you might have. I know Chief Rowe's gonna speak and I can wait till after. Yes?
I have a couple of questions and comments. So, I worked in a level-one trauma center for almost 20 years and I will tell you that those 10 and 12-hour shifts are key when you're working in these high-stress jobs. So, I think that that is really important and we need to find the staff to help you guys do that. I think that that's very important. The trauma center that I worked at was a state facility and we had a purse program, so I'm well aware of that. And even though it was an inner-city tough job, people worked there because of that purse, cause that is a great retirement plan. And so, I think that that is something that we need to work towards, definitely. So, those are my two comments. My questions are, so, I don't know if you all know, but I am currently a criminal justice student at York County Community College and we've had a couple of presentations from other entities and we got, I told Mike this, we got bonus points on our final if we attended. I think I've passed my prime with my law enforcement days, although I think it'd be super cool to have a badge.
You're hired.
Well, thank you. But, so anyway, we had presentations as recruitment and so I think that maybe doing something like that is worthwhile, granted, we're still students, but maybe creating some sort of tuition reimbursement or something like that might be worthwhile because there are quite a few students in my classes. I'm not pursuing law enforcement, but a lot of people are and so I think that maybe that's something that's worthwhile. I don't know the logistics of it, but that's just my one sort of comment slash question if that's been thought about.
Yes, thank you. We have hit some colleges up and that, myself, I've presented at some colleges. We have offered tuition students in the past that if they're a tuition student through a college that attend the main criminal justice academy, we'll look to reimburse them for their tuition for going to the academy. So, we're pretty much open everything and we'll do everything we can to try to attract, but as I stated, it's almost every police department out there that's doing the same thing. Very difficult. We, we advertise out of state to the extent that we can because it's costly. So, looking for ideas.
Yeah, no, I think that work-life balance is key or life-work balance and those 10s and 12s are huge and so hopefully you can make that work. Did you get SRO for the high school, someone replacing Officer Courtney?
Yes, we have, we're in the works of that right now.
Cool. All right. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
I'll keep my thinking cap on.
Much appreciated.
Courtney?
Yeah, I guess my question is, when you are talking to current staff, obviously everyone knows everyone in other departments and there's always that conversation of maybe people moving over or whatever, what do you think it is, the number, other than those three things that you were suggesting, is there anything else you're hearing that is holding people back from making that switch? Are they waiting for a referral bonus or are they waiting for a sign-on bonus? Like, what do you think that we could do in the immediate to help?
Well, I was hoping that retirement would pass. I think that would have been a big draw. That was one of the reasons, as far as the schedule goes, the four and three, that was gonna be another big draw because the schedule is very important. We have heard from other people that were considering coming here, that the current schedule that were on, they did not like. It's a four and two and so they didn't wanna come over for that. So, I thought if the retirement passes, we have this new schedule, we're gonna draw. But then the other thing I hear is, is, you know, the, the, the pay rate too. Again, we're maybe just a tad above average here and in this market, it's just not cutting it with the others.
Right. So, I think, you know, I fully supported the retirement and I think most of us did. I feel like similar to the Public Works, you know, we talked about if that didn't pass, having to have some type of outreach and I think that, you know, that's something that should be prepared, thinking of November now and how you could help us present that message or maybe more clearly and more adequately leading up to that. That would be the only other thing, but I agree with Lisa about recruiting in the schools and maybe, maybe there's an opportunity to look for something of, if we're not gonna do a $20,000 sign-on bonus like Kennybunk Port, is there something else that we could be discussing as a board? You know, there's a lot of positions sitting there that are budgeted for and the money's there, so if we can't even find one, is there a way to move something around to entice a movement and if we could at least have a discussion around it?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say, what would it take to be able to increase the salary? I know my son-in-law is a police officer in Wyoming and we're trying to lure him here, but he said the pay was, it, it just couldn't, couldn't swing it because of that.
For study.
Yeah. So, I don't know.
We're in contract negotiations now and Nick, he'll hear some of that a little bit later. And I would say, Courtney, with regard to outreach, that begins tonight. I think part of what the chiefs are here to speak about is the fact of, we had, I think we were, I was talking with Chief McKenzie, there was an awareness of some members who were anxious perhaps to relocate to Kennybunk P D contingent upon the change in schedule and the passing of the retirement warrant article. The schedule will take effect July 1st and so I hope that our outreach efforts over the next few months may be an aid to help the public understand the, the challenges being faced.
My hope is to keep the officers we have here, here, keep them happy, give them incentive to wanna stay because any one of them could go across the bridge and get $20,000 to start and make more money and get a 20-year retirement. That, that stinks.
Yes, Bill?
I, I think it's important to remember also that when you, when you think about that, is that when you do bring in a new officer, there's all the training and equipment and everything else in the, in the very early stages, which is also very costly and a lot more than $20,000.
Absolutely.
So, we're, you know, you're right. You don't wanna give the officers you have away.
Is there a detrimental effect of those bonuses on the existing staff? So, in other words, does that blow the culture up or?
That's why we've kind of tried to stay away. A, we don't want people coming here just for money. It's, you know, we want them here for the full picture. They have to be a good fit for us and vice versa. But in addition, as you stated, somebody that just came here a year ago, if we implemented a sign-on bonus of $20,000, is that really fair to everyone? You know, I have a tough time with that.
Public Chief, Chief Rowe, your fire chief. Here he comes.
Good evening. I get to reiterate probably pretty much the same thing that you've heard from Chief McKenzie. I do have a little bit of literature for numbers as far as fire goes and the retirement systems that are available in our area. This was work put together by the fire department union and one of my discussions with them. I don't, I don't think that we are in quite the predicament that the police department is with current vacancies. As you know, the board and the town were successful in the SAFER grant, which we were able to hire eight people, which builds up our strength, but that, that brings the strength of a full-time shift to four people per day. Our shifts are a little different than the P D, they work a 24-hour shift. That is something that in the East Coast is a common thing. When you go out west, the further you go, the more it's 10s and 14s. There are some towns in our community that work 48 hours straight, which is, you can form your own opinion about being away from family and home and lack of sleep for 48 hours straight. The competition is huge for these jobs. Most, all of the fire departments that you see on that list offer the 3C, which is the 25 years 2/3. We're on the same plan that Chief McKenzie talked about earlier, it's the 20-year 50%. The benefits here in the community are wonderful as far as everything but the retirement. They're expensive. We're, we're probably 50 to 65... We're, we're probably 50 to 65% of the salary goes towards benefits. And that's, you know, that's, that's a cost to the community. However, there are people that we have had on the hook, so to speak, like Bob has had in the past, that simply have not come to here because of the retirement plan. They have it in the place that they're at now. And if you're a firefighter, too, with a paramedic license, you can pretty much go anywhere you want. We have some wonderful people that we brought on board with the SAFER grant. We're now putting some of those people through school. Chief Brady did a great job in finding free tuition schools for our EMTs to AEMTs. We have five in there. And we just had a person that's an AEMT sign up to go to paramedic and also free tuition. So that's, that's 10 grand for the paramedic. You know, you still have wages and benefits and things like that, but it is a cost. I think as you move forward with both the fire union and the police union, listen to what they have to say on some, listen to what they have to say on all topics. But you will hear from them what's important to them. And they go out and they look at this list. They helped me build this list, and that's what they want. And we've done a pretty good job so far of working with the firefighters downstairs to build it so that we can retain them. But there are still other things out there, and the retirement is a big one. It used to be many years ago that people would take municipal jobs because of the benefits, and the pay wasn't that great. And now the tide has kind of evened out where the private sector pay is there, and so are the benefits. When I graduated from college, I put in for New York City, and myself and 29 other thousand people were testing for positions there. Indianapolis, Indiana, 3,500 people test for positions there. So the, the numbers are huge in those bigger cities. The competition is great. In smaller communities, it's not so much. When we got the safer positions, I sat with the captains and said, where are we going to find eight people? And low and behold, 42 people came out of the woodwork and applied for our community, which was very exciting to think that, that that's of interest. These are people that are starting into the business. There's a few senior folks there, and they looked at, they've been in the business long enough to look at the community and see what else the community has to offer besides just dollars and cents. I mean, it is a wonderful community. So the, the younger people, they don't think much about retirement and, you know, 25 or 35 or 45 years later. They think about right now, and what's the dollars and cents now? And I got a fire job and all that. So it's up to us, as both the leaders of our departments and the communities, to watch out for these folks, because after a while, they'll leave. And we, we currently use perdiems to augment the shift downstairs. Like I said, we have four people on at once, and we have three perdiem positions available daily. And the perdiems come from 18 other departments, plus some people don't work in that field elsewhere that come to us. But, but they see and they understand what it is that we offer, and perdiem pay is important to them. They don't get a benefit. Maybe down the road, we can offer that. But we try to convert perdiems, and some of you have been around where I've talked about the staffing plan and conversion, offering benefits, and then hiring and just doing perdiems. But we're having a difficult time with perdiems now because of competition for just pay. And the budget that just passed, we're going to adjust that. But as I, excuse me, as I always say with people, wages are a cyclical thing. We may be down low in the valley now and high on the hill next time. So if you're going to, if an employee is going to move simply for wages, that's, I would caution against that, because if, if this department is high now and we're low, which we're not, then pretty soon it will think, is he going to come back? Will we take him back or her? So there's a number of things that are involved in that. We, we are part of a 17 different departments that operate with Southern Maine Community College for their fire science students. We have five live-in students that live here. We've had some wonderful students come through here. We've trained them, and they've gone on to other full-time jobs. In that time period, we created what we called a summer intern firefighter position, where we had hoped to, and we were successful in the beginning, to hire these young experts, I call them, to come and work in the fire department in the summertime and see what it's actually like. You know, do they, it's one thing to look at us from outside, but to, to look at the department from inside, whether it's our department or someone else's, it makes for a better, more quality employee in the long run. This year is the first year that we've not had any students apply for the summer intern program. I've not, I've not heard a lot of rumors as to why. We do have some applications, but they're not the students. So on one hand, I say the students don't look at retirement. What are they looking at? And if they're spending two, two years at SMCC getting a fire science degree, what are they doing with that degree? Are they not entering into the field? So a number of different things there. Is the, is the retirement that we sought at the election the answer to everything? No, it is not. But as you can look at this sheet, there are 11 departments in our immediate area that offer that. There are two listed there that are working on other programs within their department and will certainly go after retirement next. But if all things are the same except for that, is that enough to move? I moved from one system to this system. I moved from a better system to a less system, and Maine PERS smashed those together, and they told me they'll take care of me. I'll tell you at the end of July if they're going to take care of me. But I think, like you said, the Maine PERS system is wonderful. I think that's a great opportunity. It's something to offer the person to stay. We have had three or four people that I could name names, and I won't, they're public, that have turned down jobs in our department because of retirement. And that's, they said that right up front. Because we've been able to work with some people as far as wages goes. If you've been on the job for a certain number of years, can you pick up some more vacation? I think like that. And the union is supportive of that type of thing. Home life, and, you know, home life is important. After you've been here or been forced, like the police departments are talking about, when is your spouse or significant other going to say, that's enough? And I mean, a community close to ours that runs four different shifts was so short in the past year, they were short almost one whole shift. And the, and the men and women that worked there would go in anticipating that they would be forced for 48 hours. And it took quite a toll on the, on the membership there, both, both the worker and the spouse or significant other. So I would say, you know, what you're going to hear in talking with the unions and the personnel, as well as the staff, and what you folks hear and see out on the street and know from your, from your life's experience is very important here. Those are, those are some things that, that are important to us. And I, I look forward to having you folks move forward. As the manager says, this is the tip of the iceberg to maybe go out there and start to talk some more about this process. Thank you.
Questions for Chief?
I just wanted to say that my husband and I both worked at the same trauma center, and we chose to leave a large city and high-stress jobs to come to Kennybunk. And the quality of life here is why we left. And we left our PERS because of Kennybunk. And so I hope other people will see that. My question for you is, what, how long until you're vested in the PERS program?
10 years.
10 years. And is that the program that Kennybunk has chosen? Or is that a state thing, do you know?
That's a state thing, and it may be five.
Okay.
Not 10. I'm so vested, I don't know.
Right. Ours is, when in Washington, it was five years, and I was just curious.
Is it five? Yeah, it's five.
It is five. Okay, well, that's good. And so, yeah, once you're invested, then you, like, clearly are invested in the community.
Sure. And the other neat thing that you talk about, going from big to small, and I've talked to a bunch of people lately about that. This is a community where people know who you are out on the street. And they make cookies, and they make all these other things, and they bring to the station. When you're working in a bigger city, people don't know your name. The ones that you affect on a daily basis are thankful that you're there. The rest of them could care less. And we only touch a small percentage of the people. But in our community, I think that's a quality thing. At least it is to me. And I see some of our people, and when a person comes in and thanks you for the job that you do, that's, that's a really great thing. And I think that's some of the benefit that we see, both in police and fire. And it makes the community safer, both from a police aspect and fire safety aspect, because we're more on a, I won't say a first-name basis, but we see one another quite a bit. It's just not, oh, there's some police officer. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public board? Thank you, Chief Rowe.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. So no action is required for, no actions required moving on to item four, broadcast system improvements. During the past several months, staff has been working with Michael Davis of Gargoyle Productions, manages our cable Zoom, to develop a hybrid meeting solution. We originally contracted Headlight Audio Visual, who provided an estimate of $39,700 with an uncertain installation timeline. We also contacted K Systems Global for an estimate. We have worked with K Systems in the past, installing the current AV system to control the sound and camera production. K Systems recently submitted an estimate of $13,765.61 with installation to occur during July and August. K Systems estimate includes the following: two 86-inch monitors for rooms 301 and 300. 301 projector and screen will be replaced by this monitor. So that's here. Change to a more sophisticated switching system and associated components to accommodate changes. New system can also be controlled through an app, web interface, and through buttons on the front of the unit without the need for a complex and inexpensive third-party control system. Power management and backup, our battery backup, remote management of system for faster and less expensive consultations or service calls, should they be necessary. Case to house equipment confidence monitor to preview items plugged into the new system prior to being sent to video switch. Replace two broken control room monitors. Streamline system and reduce operator workload. System to be expandable for future add-ons. Given K Systems familiarity with the current setup system, structure, ability to perform the work, this summer, good working relationship with staff and reasonable cost, we have accepted K Systems estimate contingent upon funding. With respect to funding of the project, we are proposing to use the Select Board's capital contingency funds. Since this project has a life of greater than one year, hopefully three years or longer, the current balance of the fund is $171,857.62. Is that you, Joel? Mike?
Joel. I think Joel has the insight track.
Wait, hold on. Karen?
Yes, that would have been.
There's not a whole lot more to say, other than the proposed price is $14,500, just for the public that might be listening.
Questions? So I don't know, does anybody have any questions?
This is a considerably cheaper proposal than the one from, from Gargoyle, but it seems like it's...
Actually, that was from Headlight.
Headlight, okay.
Right.
So, but it looks like it's pretty comprehensive.
It, it appears to be comprehensive. I'm not an AV expert. I've got to rely on Michael for, for that information. He's given the thumbs up on this. Rich Boucher is saying, let's go for it. Again, Rich is a computer guy, not a, an AV guy, so. And then I look to Blake for, for guidance as well. And so Mitch has done a good job for us. You can see the system is working. He put that in, I want to say, seven years ago, eight years ago? Something of that nature. And it's, it's still running. So I don't know for sure. I'm going to say, let's go for it.
Well, of course, Blake, you, you know these systems better than I do. What do you think? I mean, is it, if, if this thing breaks down, is there some way to fix it? You know, they're, I mean, I, you know. What do you think about, what do you think about the system?
Well, I've been staying out of the fray because of the allegations of conflict of interest, so. But because it is technology-based, I can't help myself, so I managed to peer over shoulders. Couple observations. Number one, Mitch Piper is consummate professional, somebody who has, we partner with in my business on numerous occasions. He just bought a condo directly across the street from the fire station, so he will be a resident here and have to suffer indignities of being dragged out of his bed at a moment's notice to fix things, so that's a good thing. The Headlight, when, when, when video creation started 16 years ago, we had a three-legged stool. We did presentation services, preservation services, and rentals for production service. So the present, the presentation part of it was that we rented equipment. And our business model was to put Headlight out of business within a five-mile radius of our shop, which we very easily were able to do because our prices were quite a bit less than theirs. They're, they're really very pricey and, in my experience, not the best at customer service. So I, I think it's reasonable, from what I can see, by, by paring over shoulders and sneaking a peek here and there, it appears to be the right system for us. I think I have every faith in Mitch Piper. Michael Davis is a, somebody who has broadcast engineering experience and going back over 20 years. He was the morning technical news director for WCSH. So he, he has been working on this, and I think it's a, I think it's a good system. Anyone else?
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
Public?
Oh, sorry. I was just also going to advocate for Mitch. In a previous job as a sales rep contract, we actually installed security and technology stuff, and we put a bunch of work out to Mitch often. And if anything, I think he's a man of his word. So if something doesn't hit our need or doesn't work the way that he has it listed, I feel confident that he would make it right. Like, he did that for all of our customers and was great to work with. Haven't talked to him in, like, eight years, so this is kind of cool. But it's a reasonable price, for sure.
Board? All right, so Courtney, it looks like we have a motion here.
We do, Blake. I will make that motion to approve the use of Select Board capital contingency funds of up to $14,500 to pay for technology upgrades to improve hybrid media broadcasts and management.
I second it.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is adopted on a vote of six in favor. Seven, one, two, three, four, five. Six in favor, none opposed, one absent. All right, moving on. Discuss the formation of a charter commission. Whereas, boy, that's a, for a charter commission, that's a good way to start it. Whereas, members of the Select Board placed an interest in establishing a charter commission. Should the Board wish to advance such initiative, Title 30A MRSA Section 2102 identifies the following next step in the selection entitled, colon, Charter revisions, adoptions, and procedures. Number one, quote, "The municipal officers may determine that the revision of the municipal charter be considered or that adoption of a new municipal charter be considered, and by order, provide for the establishment of a charter commission to carry out that purpose as provided in this chapter," period, end quote. Should the Board wish to adopt such an order, Attorney Burns has provided the following. Order that pursuant to Title 30A MRSA Section 2102, the Select Board determines that the revision of the town charter should be considered in the question of whether a charter commission shall be established for that purpose, shall place, shall be placed before the voters of the town in Kennybunk at the general election to be held on November 8th, 2022. Be it further ordered that the election of the six voter members of the charter commission be held at the same election as the referendum for the charter commission. And there's a whole bunch of supporting material, which can be found on the website. That. So, discussion.
Do it.
All right.
I agree.
All right.
Also agree.
Me too.
Public, let's say the public. Brendan is giving a thumbs up there. Any questions or comments from the public before we take this moment to step? Okay. Courtney, to you.
I would like to make a motion to approve the order determining that the revision of the town charter should be considered and to please the question of whether a charter commission should be established before the voters at the general election on November 8th, 2022 and to hold the election of the six voter members of the charter commission at the same election.
I second it.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The motion is adopted on a vote of six in favor, none opposed, one absent. All right, with that, okay. Yes. Well, that's exciting. Moving on to item six, we have an executive session. So I'll read that and then Courtney will make a motion similar to what I'm about to read. Pursuant to Title 1 MRSA Section 456D, oral 56D, to discuss with the town's negotiators the status of the ongoing negotiations of labor contracts between the town Kennybunk and the main association of police for the police patrol officers and police sergeants unit. And then the motion, I don't know if you see there, includes the addition of the police chief to the attendees. Okay, let me read it. I'll do this one. Courtney, if you're all right with that. To enter into the executive session with the town manager, finance director, police chief, and human resources director pursuant to Title 1 MRSA Section 4056D for the purpose of discussing with the town's negotiators the status of the ongoing negotiation of labor contracts between the town Kennybunk and main association of police for police patrol officers and police sergeants unit. And just so everyone knows, upon exiting the executive session, the board may discuss and/or vote on matters considered in the above executive session or have nothing to report back. Any questions or comments before we? So that's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, moved in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The motion is adopted on a vote of six in favor, none opposed, one absent. So unless you were named, that means Joel and Chief McKenzie and Jerry Sheldon, we'll ask everyone else to mosey along. But we will come back into session at the end of the executive session and either take action or, well, likely not be going forward.
I will be turning off the recording device pursuant to the technology I was trained on this afternoon.